Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of San Angelo Independent School District. I'm Max Parker. I'm the president of the board. We have a quorum. All our board members are now present. I'll go through our introductory script in a few minutes, but I'd like to first introduce and invite Marcy Munchaka, the interim director of the House of Faith Ministries, to come forward and give us and deliver our invocation.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here with all of you and all these accomplished students and principals. I know it's your month to be celebrated. We appreciate you, and I personally just wanted to say there's so many great things going on in the district, and what you all do is very valued. We have, at House of Faith right now, we have two students in the 18-plus program, and the vocational program, and they come every day, and they bring us so much joy and delight, and so you all are doing an amazing job on so many levels here. Thank you. I'll just take the time now to pray. God, thank you so much for this group of board members, God, that leads and leads with wisdom. Lord, I pray that you would continue to give them more wisdom as they guide and direct all the decisions that are needing to be made in the district. Lord, I thank you for the principals and other administrators, God, that you would continue to build them and give them creativity and blessing for leading their campuses in their different areas. God, thank you for our students in SAISD who are so brilliant, Lord, and each one of them has gifts and is uniquely created by you, God, and I pray that you would give all of our educators wisdom around how to build them up as amazing young citizens of this community and just individuals in what you will use them for in their futures, God. I thank you for how you are blessing this city through our amazing school district, God. I pray that you would continue to just give them wisdom beyond wisdom in everything that they do, and thank you for how, really, this is just a far-reaching blessing for our community to be able to see all that they build into our students. Let them celebrate and rejoice in both big accomplishments and small accomplishments, really looking out for each and every individual student, to grow them in ways that are building them up, Lord, and making them understand a great purpose that you have for them. Lord, bless this meeting, and, God, we just ask for your blessings over our school district in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Marcy, and Darlene, who's with you, and all of those at House of Faith, for all you do for our students at SAISD also. I'm going to now invite these all-star students from Fort Concho Elementary to come forward. Ms. Barton is here, and these is the principal, and these are some of her students, and as I call your name, come forward, and I will tell you that these students all have all-star names. So Zoe Elizabeth Deluna, Mallory Eliana De La Fuente, Cameron Lamar Johnson, and Sean N. Wong, would you all come forward? These are fourth and fifth graders at Fort Concho. Would you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas' flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Y'all can turn around. Wait, wait. Wait, students, students. All of you go back and line up if you want to, right there. Parents can come up and take your photos, okay?
Yeah, y'all, yeah. Hop up in the front, yeah, it's all good.
Wait, wait, wait. Come on up, parents, if you need to. Get front and center if you want to. You got it? Thank you, students. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we have a script that we read that kind of sets out the parameters for our meeting. So again, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting and welcome all who are also watching this on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate all of you and your interest in our students. All items that we'll be discussing at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. As you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board workshop, which was held last Tuesday. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent and administrative staff, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind myself and my fellow board members, please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, it is my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. I thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. All right, with that said, I'm now going to turn it over to Whitney Wood and Molly Turk as they have some recognitions tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. As you entered the admin building this evening, you may have seen some beautiful artwork that greeted you as you walked through the door. Tonight, we are celebrating our young artists by recognizing our SAISD poster contest winners. These students help their campus communicate important information about actions they can take to stay safe during a fire emergency through artwork. We are so proud of each of you, as are your teachers, your principals, and your family members here with you tonight. We will start by announcing our third grade winners, followed by fourth and fifth grade. When I call your name, come forward, and please remain facing the audience so we can take your photo at the end. So from third grade, our poster winners are: fourth place, Braxton Belmont of Santa Rita; third place, Taylor Cotton of Fort Concho; second place is Aiden Aguilar of Bonham; first place, Sophia Duran, also of Bonham; from fourth grade, our poster winners are: fourth place, Harper Smickel, Santa Rita; second place, Morgan Newlin, Santa Rita; and first place, Haley Stribling, Santa Rita; and finally, from our fifth grade students, we have fourth place, Isabella Martinez of Lamar; Aaron Matthews of Fort Concho; Miranda Medina is in second place, from McGill; and first place is Elias Puma Peng of Fort Concho. Congratulations, and keep up the great work. We also appreciate the San Angelo Fire Prevention Office for not only bringing us this wonderful contest, but a campaign to educate our students and families, but for also keeping us safe. Thanks, kiddos. Dr. D., if you'd like to come up and take a photo?
Whitney, before they leave, make sure they circle around.
(laughter)
Poster contest winners, we'd love for you all to stay, but if you'd like to leave, you may, you may leave. You don't have to wait through the whole board meeting.
Thanks again, parents, bringing your children up here. Congratulations.
We are so happy and honored to recognize a very special group, our principals. Now, principals, all the time, you guys are lining up groups, so now we're going to ask you all if y'all can line up in alphabetical order over here on the side. We'll see if you guys can do that on your own, by school, with elementary schools first, while I'm starting to recognize you guys, okay? All right, so, Mr. Parker, while they are doing that, I'll go ahead and get started. So, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Quietly, guys, y'all, quietly, Mrs. Humble. Okay, here we go. We're honored this evening to recognize our campus principals for National Principals Month. With every new challenge, they've risen to the occasion and led their learning community forward with bold leadership. They are relationship builders and care deeply about their students, staff, and school communities. When one looks at the job description for a campus principal, you will see their major job responsibility reads. Direct and manage the instructional program and supervise operations at the campus level. Provide leadership to supervise, oh, excuse me, provide leadership to ensure high standards of instructional service. Direct the implementation of district policies and instructional programs, and manage the operation of all campus activities. Now, what does that really mean? It means to work around the clock, to do whatever it takes to shape a vision of academic success for all students, while managing people, data, and processes to foster school improvement. Leadership is not a position or a title. It is action and example. Each of these principals lead by action and example. They are difference makers. Their goal each and every day is to make the hopes and dreams of students and parents come true as they serve and lead our SAISD educators and staff. We have with us this evening, from Altaloma, I thought I saw her earlier, maybe I did not, sorry, that was my mistake, we're going to recognize her. So what we will recognize from Altaloma, Mrs. Lori Herndon, let's just give her a round of applause. But we do have with us, from Austin Elementary, so, Ms. Collinbach, if you will come across and just kind of make a circle so we can scoot all of y'all in, okay? And, Dr. Detloff, could you come up so it's not awkward for Mrs. Collinbach? Okay, great. All right, so, from Austin, we have Mrs. Collinbach, let's give her a round of applause. Not able to make it this evening, but we definitely want to recognize Mrs. Laura Eubank from Bel Air Elementary. Also, let's recognize Mrs. Wierzowski from Bonham Elementary; Mr. Darius Flowers from Bowie Elementary; next with us, from Bradford, Mrs. Bertha Carrasco; from Crockett Elementary, Mr. Clayton Hubbard; from Vannan Elementary, Mrs. Kathy Humble; from Fort Concho Elementary, Mrs. Lori Barton; from Glenmore Elementary, Mrs. Teri Gould; from Goliad Elementary, Mrs. Shannon Claypack; from Holloman Elementary, Mrs. Ginger Luther; from Lamar Elementary, Dr. Jennifer Ryan; from McGill Elementary, Dr. John Ritter; from Reagan Elementary, Mrs. Brandy Tyner; from San Jacinto Elementary, Mrs. Kimberly Spurgers; from Santa Rita Elementary, Mrs. Kay Scott; from Glenn Middle School, Mr. Michael Collinbach; from Lincoln Middle School, Mr. Joe Gondar; from Lone Star Middle School, Mrs. Amy LaMester; from Central High School, Mr. Bill Waters; from Lakeview High School, Mr. Zach Ramirez; from Carver Learning Center, Miss Claudia Becerra; and also for PACE, Mrs. Claudia Becerra. So please join me one final time for giving all of our SAISD principals a round of applause for their continuous efforts in servant leadership. But we want a photo really quick with you and them, so, I don't know. Oh, no, just him.
Okay, everyone else, your certificates, this girl.
We said you didn't have your mom here to take a picture.
One, two, three. Thank y'all, I congratulate, thanks for all of these.
But now I'm going to have to shake him.
Why don't you look this way?
Thank you. Thank you, principals.
Oh, I like it. That's snappy.
Dr. John Ritter gets the outfit award for today.
And I also want to thank Dr. Farah Gomez that was doing all the introductions, drill sergeant-wise, you know? She had on her principal hat that she used to have in the past. Okay, we'll go on now with our agenda, our regular agenda items. We have our minutes that we need to approve from September 13th, 2021, and September 20th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion for approval, second.
There's a motion by Mr. Dindell and a second by Dr. Kingman to approve this particular agenda item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment on this particular agenda item? If not, I call it for vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The motion passes. This is the time that I mentioned in my, when I read the script early on, that if anyone wanted to give any public comments on topics not on our agenda at this meeting, this is when you would come forward. I don't think we had anyone to sign up, but is anyone here that wants to give public comment? If not, then we'll move forward. We now have our report section. Dr. McFarland, student enrollment report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. The student enrollment report for Monday, October 4th, which was the seventh Monday of the school year, shows that we had 63, 48 students in elementary, 3,191 in middle school, and at our high school level, 42, 43, for a total of 13,821 on the seventh Monday of school. That is, shows from this time last year, a lower number by 213. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you, Dr. McFarland. Dr. Ritter, do you have any update on academic programs?
Thank you, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. We're happy tonight to bring to you a report on academic programs through the lens looking at community-based accountability and our focus on true accountability, the seven pillars of true accountability, and this is the work that we have been doing in our district now for about five years, our work with the Texas Public Accountability Consortium, and as leaders of this work in the state, and our partnership with the Texas Association of School Administrators, as we are highlighted continuously as one of the districts moving forward with this work, our work with also John Tanner helping us as a consultant. And as we continue to move this forward, we are just attempting to take everything we do to present to you through the lens of true accountability and our community-based accountability system, and our pillars are: pillar one, student learning and achievement; pillar two, student readiness; pillar three, engaged, well-rounded students; pillar four, community engagement and partnerships; pillar five, effective staff; pillar six, systems and operations; and pillar seven, safety and well-being. So tonight, to highlight some of these pillars, and really all of the work that we do in the district, it all overlays, it all fits together, but our true accountability and our focus on how we make our decisions to benefit students in the district is the foundation of everything that we do. So tonight, I'm going to ask Shelley Hettleston, our executive director of teaching and learning, to join me, and she has some principals who will also be helping her with this presentation tonight, to talk more about one of the specific activities that we're doing in our district to help promote the pillars of student learning and achievement, student readiness, engaged, well-rounded students, effective staff, and really all of our pillars are focused on through this, but it's with our executive coaching I've highlighted before for you as one of the activities that we're focusing on this year to help our administrators in our district.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. Good evening. I wanted to let you know that earlier this year, in the spring, San Angelo ISD applied for a competitive grant that was made available from the Texas Education Agency called the Effective Schools Framework Competitive Grant, and that grant was, it was a very long process, very involved process, and it was available, you could apply for that grant if you had Title I schools who were already engaging in the work of the Effective Schools Framework, and we have been well-engaged in the Effective Schools Framework work for about three years now. So Cherie Braden, who's in the audience, helped me a lot with this. She did a lot of boots-on-the-ground work. We went to every one of our schools, we went through a diagnostic assessment with our schools, looking at their needs and looking at the way that they were participating in things that had to do with the Effective Schools Framework, and then we really worked carefully with them to highlight what are some of our important goals and some of the things that we want to do. As part of that, we were asked, you had to make a commitment to partner with a vetted service provider, and we were able to do that. And what I wanted to let you know is that through that grant, which was about 48 pages of written work, and then some budgetary things that we, Dr. McFarland helped me put together, San Angelo ISD was awarded almost $900,000 from this competitive grant to do this work. And so, as you see, and this is a little bit more difficult to see, but this is the complete framework for effective schools. You see in the very center of that is effective instruction, and then the pieces that surround that, strategic staffing, high-quality instructional materials and assessment, positive school culture, and then around the side of it, encircling the whole thing, is strong school leadership and planning. So in that grant application, we had to show what we were doing in all of those areas, and all of that aligns exactly with what Dr. Ritter was talking about, with our community-based accountability. If you look at high-quality instructional materials, that aligns with pillars one, two, and three, about student achievement and student readiness, engaged, well-rounded students. Pillar five with strategic staffing has to do with effective staff, which is part of the systems that we work well with. Positive school culture, those are also CBAS levers of lever three, when it talks about engaged, well-rounded students, and also safety and well-being with all of the work we do with our SEL. And all of that put together is effective instruction, and that covers all of our pillars, student achievement, student readiness, all of that. So we were able to show through our CBAS work and through this grant that, yes, we're already deeply engaged in the work, and so, as I said, we were awarded this grant for over, for a two-year period to work with a partnership. And what we decided, the part of the reason I think that we got the grant is because of what we wrote about the fact that we wanted to center everything around strong school leadership and planning, because the most important piece of student academic achievement, we know, is how those campuses are led. And we are celebrating our principals tonight. Our kids are not going to have academic achievement if we don't have really strong leadership on our campuses. So we wanted to put a lot of our efforts into strong school leadership and planning, and this is just one of the quotes that we have been thinking about, that leadership defines what the future should look like, aligns people with that vision, and then inspires them to make it happen despite the obstacles. We know that our principals have faced a lot of obstacles over the last two years, but we have worked hard to have a vision for what achievement should look like, and we're working hard with them to help align that vision and then inspire people to do that work. So the vetted improvement provider that we applied to work with is engaged to learn is Engage to Learn. Principals are earning badges through coaching that they're doing and celebrating the good work that's happening as a result of that coaching. And I even just put a little example in here.[551.79][551.79](LAUGHING) So this, for example, is from one of our principals, Mrs. Herndon from Altaloma. She's been engaged in this professional coaching for two years. And as you can see, every time she, her coach comes and works with her and talks about what are some of the systems that you've put in place? How are you following up with that? Then when she provides evidence that those things are happening, she's awarded a badge through E2L, and all of our principals are doing that as well. So I just wanted to show you all of the things that in the last two years she's been giving badges for.[595.41][595.41](LAUGHING) So she's just one of the examples of some great things that are happening because she's taken this coaching very seriously and making some celebrated changes on her campus. So this is what it would look like as an Engage to Learn coach sits with one of our principals and walks them through, you know, some of the, some of the systems that they're building and has them provide some evidence. And I thought that rather than hearing from me, because I could tell you what they're doing, but it would be better for you to hear it straight from the mouth of a couple of our principals. So I want to invite first Amy LaMaster to come to the podium. Amy is principal at Lone Star Middle School, and she's been involved in executive coaching. This will be year three that she has been able to be involved in executive coaching, and I wanted her to share a little bit about her experience. And then when Ms. LaMaster finishes, then Ginger Luther, who is elementary principal at Holloman, I'd also like for her to share a little bit about what her experience and some of the learning that she's had through her executive coaching. So Ms. LaMaster, thanks.
I learned at my Inspire training last week that if you are feeling an emotion, you should voice it and make it feel better. I'm really nervous right now, so I'm voicing that emotion. So Ginger came up here with me. My Engage to Learn coaching, this is my third year as a principal, and also my third year with Engage to Learn. I think the biggest thing that I've learned with my coach is that it's very important to put systems in place. As a new principal, I feel like I was, well, Dr. Gomez called us difference makers. As a new principal, I felt more like a firefighter. And a lot of us know what that feels like, to be running around putting out fires. My coach challenged me to grow and put systems in place for my campus so that I didn't have to be a firefighter, so that I could build a strong leadership team, build strong teachers, and strong systems, so that we would have a strong campus. The first time we met, she said, "Tell me about your student demographics. Tell me how you meet the needs of all of your learners." Another time that we met, she invited my assistant principals to join us, and she said, "You need to treat your assistant principals like they are principals because that's the only way that they will grow to become principals." She always challenges me in ways that make me grow and learn, but never make me feel like I'm doing something wrong. I've learned so much in my time with my Engage to Learn coach. And this year, I'd learned that many more principals were going to get coaches, and I was so scared I was going to lose mine.[780.76][780.76](LAUGHING) So I talked to Mr. Underwood, and I said, "Please let me keep being coached because I just enjoy my time with my coach so much." Because sometimes, being the principal can be kind of lonely. You're the only one in that role in your building, so it's nice to have somebody to talk to and bounce ideas off of. One of my main goals this year with my coach is for me to become a better coach for my teachers and my leadership team. So that's what we're working on together in my third year with Engage to Learn.[814.82][814.82](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, and I have a lot of the same things that Amy talked about. I'm in my 16th year, but this was my third year to have a coach. And I can tell you, even though I was in my, I'm in my 16th year, you still have those days where you feel like you're a firefighter. But like Amy said, the best thing that I could say, and I was so excited to hear that everybody was going to have a coach this year because she helped me take the ESF framework that we had, the T-PASS, and the Engage to Learn, and she made it, they made it fit all together. So you feel like, yes, I'm doing all these different things, but all those different things help me be on the same page. So you don't feel like I'm having to do this for this or check this box. You're really actually doing the work. And also, with the badging system, you know, badges motivate some people, they don't motivate other people, but like for me, it's a, it's a, something I can look at. I have 20, I've earned 26 badges. That, I'm like, that's exciting to me. That motivates me to see that I've actually, you know, I went from level one to level two to level three, and then to level four in some of the areas. And those were, that's celebratory for me. You know, just because you've been doing it for a while, you don't have all the systems in place that you need because sometimes you're so in the fire that you can't step back and see what you, what systems you could put in place to make your life easier. So definitely having the coach has been superior for me. And I, again, I was excited to hear that everybody was going to have a coach this year. Some of the other, I really, again, I really believe it. It made things manageable, and I've actually tried, I started doing badges with my teachers. Some of the other campuses were doing that in the past, but I needed that better understanding for myself and actually what to earn badges for, and then what you didn't need to. So I started doing that with my teachers, and I can tell, some of them, it really motivates, and they want more badges, so they want to do more things. And, and I try to tell them, it's not about doing more, it's about being smarter about what you're doing and making sure that it all aligns. And just like Amy said, my goal is to continue to get better at coaching. You have conversations with teachers all the time, but to have those really good, solid conversations, but also that are quick, and you get to the point, but you're also reflective. And so definitely, I think that's a huge goal for me as well, and it'll continue to be a goal as we move on. So definitely money well spent. And I too, like Amy said, I was really hoping I wasn't going to lose my coach because everybody else was getting them also.
Do you guys have any questions for these ladies? They're probably like, oh, don't ask me a question, but...[1011.51][1011.51](LAUGHING) Do you have any questions for them?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you so much for doing that. I appreciate it so much.
We appreciate you, Amy, appreciate you, Ginger, all you do on your campuses and for our district.
You know, John Maxwell says that the highest level of being a leader is to inspire and create other leaders. So that's really what we're trying to do here, is to be as supportive as we possibly can in building great leadership. And what's happening, what I see happening on the campus is more leaders being grown and supported through what's happening here. And I couldn't end this section on leadership without saying something too about Cherie Braden, Ms. Braden, because one of the things that Cherie has done, working directly with Mr. Underwood and myself and working with all of these campus principals, is that as they have their sessions with the E2L coach, then sometime directly after that, Cherie schedules a time to go and sit down with the principal and say, "Now what kind of support do you need from us in reaching those goals?" And kind of going back over those things with them in a very systematic and methodical way. And it has made a huge difference with our principals. So I want you to know the good work that Cherie is doing in really helping Wes and I and the Curriculum Instruction Department just make sure that these principals have everything that they need. And so with that, I'm going to turn this back over to Dr. Ritter because she has some exciting things to tell you about celebrating the ways that our kids are smart.
Thank you, Shelley. And something that I would like to say, I'm just so glad that we got to highlight this tonight and take a deeper dive into this with you. It has been one of the truly transformational practices in our district. I think that all of us, when you keep hearing the principals say, "Learning to not be a firefighter all the time" because it is so reactive many times on the campus as a leader, well, any of us in leadership roles in a district, but to slow down, be reflective, be intentional, it's really helping our principals. And all of our directors in our, in our building also, and C and I are receiving this, this coaching as well. And they have goals, they're earning those badges. It's just a great systematic way for us to all work together, and we talk about our goals with each other. And it's been such a great thing. And so thank you to Shelley Huddleston also for, she's the one who actually wrote the grant for us, and it was hours and hours of time, but so worth it. And we are so pleased that we're able to, to put this forward and do these great things in our district because of, because of that work. So next, if you, does anyone have any questions about the coaching? Because we're going to shift gears just a little bit.
I do, Dr. Ritter.
Yes.
What happens, the grant's a two-year grant. What happens following that timeframe when we continue coaching? And what funding source would that come from?
Well, what we are also trying to do with this and with the team at Engage to Learn, we're learning to build capacity in our own district. That's the goal, along with when we do Mass Solutions, we do Scholastic. We're building that capacity so that those of us who are helping to lead can also learn how to be better coaches. And so that we can take on some of that in the way that they coach us. We learn so much about how to question, ask those good questions to lead and guide and facilitate rather than tell. And so it's about building capacity, and that is the goal of Engage to Learn through this and the way that their coaches work with us. And that's something we're doing, is learning how we continue to build capacity. We'll have so many administrators who will have gone through this experience. But it's also, you know, as we look at alternative sources of funding, there are things through federal funding, state funding, state comp ed, that we'll be able to do some more of this coaching if we prioritize it because we do believe that it is extremely helpful in moving the work forward in our district.
Yeah, I guess just a comment on top of that would be, I do think it has to be prioritized because y'all've got lots of other things going on.
Yes.
But if you, if we forget about coaching, or we do it for three years instead of five or whatever we need to do, then y'all are the ones that have to drive the initiative one and then continue in, along those roles. So I know y'all've got plenty to do, but I'm going to expect y'all to build leaders like you're talking about, rather than us just be talking about it.
Yes, we're, we're excited about that. Because I think, as you can hear, it's something that we're hearing from our principals who've experienced it. And also Cherie Braden experienced it last year. She had a coach last year, and we all agree that it absolutely, we knew that we wanted to prioritize that this year for this grant and to make this be something that we continue, a culture of coaching in our district. So we appreciate that support, too. We want that to be a priority, absolutely. Okay. So moving forward, I'm going to ask, I think Molly Turk, are you going to come forward? And our team did, a communications team did a phenomenal job with a little video about celebrating all the ways our students are smart. You hear us talking about with community-based accountability and our work with all of these components and the pillars of true accountability. How are we really telling our story and putting our story out there? And so we are focusing on building that story so that we can move that forward. We have our Advisory Council that's going to come in, coming up. We're scheduling that for November to take more of our true accountability work and move that forward in telling our story. So I'm going to let Molly introduce this little video that they put together from the communications team. So thank you so much to our communications team for this, this great video.
So this year, as part of what the communications team will be doing is we'll be highlighting our students and our programs that empower those students to celebrate their hopes and dreams and what makes them smart. We want to show our public that not only does SAISD provide them the framework to excel in literacy, math, science, and English, but also for them to excel at all of the other areas that make them smart. So a huge shout out to Jack Wilcox, who provided us his smartness to create this wonderful video for us. And this is just the beginning. This is how we're going to kind of launch the way we're going to do this, but we're going to continue to highlight all of our programs in, in different ways that make us special, such as our, our CTE, our great athletic programs, many of the wonderful things that our elementaries are doing on their campuses that are like their morning shows or their leadership clubs that their students participate at. So, let's see what.[1444.54][1444.54](MUSIC PLAYING)
At San Angelo ISD, we believe that students are more than just a test score.
We value the hopes and dreams of each child.
And work diligently to enhance student learning and reduce achievement gaps.
To produce future ready graduates.[1474.76][1474.76](MUSIC PLAYING)
No matter what that future might look like.
By honoring each student's unique strengths and supporting their individual needs, we celebrate all the ways.[1485.91][1485.91](MUSIC PLAYING)
All the ways.
All the ways.[1490.88][1490.88](MUSIC PLAYING)
All the ways.
Todas las formas.
Always.
We celebrate all the ways our students are smart.[1504.16][1504.16](MUSIC PLAYING)
Hope y'all enjoyed that. Just a brief introduction.[1519.76][1519.76](APPLAUSE) Do y'all have any questions about the video or SMART?
You've mentioned you're, is this something we're going, you're going to be doing more of these videos? And I assume these get put on our website and other places?
Yes.
Are we playing any of these on, other than just during the meetings on Channel 4?
Yes. So tomorrow, we will be adding this to our Channel 4. It will be on our website. We'll have a landing page, a way for them to get it on our homepage on a carousel. It'll go on our Facebook, and we hope y'all will help us share it and spread the word. But this is just the beginning. So our goal is to continue featuring different smartness throughout the district. So at least once a month, hopefully more, we'll go out and do a variety of things. So it may not always be a video, but it will be some way that we're highlighting these different programs and highlighting our students' smartness.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Jack. And Dr. Ritter and Shelley Huddleston, we appreciate you, your update on academic programs. This was very informative. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing really quick? If I could just add one thing. I just wanted to congratulate Shelley and Cherie for that grant. That's, I've written grants before, and they're not easy, and I know they took a lot of time. So thank you so much for your time and effort into getting that done.
And I guess we're, if there's not any other questions, we'll move forward. And I don't remember, Dr. Detloff, if you had anything with Goodfellow tonight or not.
Just a couple of brief remarks. I just wanted to connect my comments to pillar four, which we just saw, and that was community engagement and partnerships. And to let our board and constituents know that we work hand-in-hand with Goodfellow Air Force Base. In fact, today, we had a, another academic program, programming meeting and partnership meeting with Teresa Goodwin and Air Force and our Goodfellow Air Force Base. So we continue to look at ways we can celebrate all the ways our students are smart and look at our curriculum alignment and also our partnership with Goodfellow. So things are going well, and we have multiple meetings planned with them just as we have in typical years throughout the coming months. So again, it's a great responsibility for us and Goodfellow to continue to have these strong partnerships. So I just want to thank Teresa and the Goodfellow Air Force Base staff as well.
When you're saying Teresa, she's sitting in the back right here. Why don't you stand up, Teresa, so everybody can see you? They can't see you on the TV, but we appreciate you.
Teresa Goodwin is our school family liaison and represents Goodfellow Air Force Base. And so we sure have benefited from her collegiality the last few years, and she's been a blessing to our district and works closely with our Communications Department as well.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff. All right, next on our agenda are consent items. We have, looks like eight items, and I'll go through those. A is consider approval of the annual portfolio report ending August 31, 2021. B, consider 2021-2022 authorized list of investment broker-dealers. C, consider 2021-2022 authorized list of investment training providers. D, consider approval of the CDA local investment policy for SAISD. E, consider bid number 21-020 library books, periodicals, supplies and equipment. F, consider bid number 21-021 for data cabling. G, consider bid number 20-009 maintenance transportation and miscellaneous supplies. And H, consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for the school year 2021-2022. All of these items were discussed at our pre-agenda meeting last week, and we put them on our consent items. Does anyone want to pull any of these off? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion, motion to approve consent items A through H. Motion, motion to approve consent items A through H. Second.
There's been a motion by Dr. Kingman and a second by Mr. Lehman to approve consent items A through H, as I mentioned a few minutes ago. Is there any other board discussion on these items? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, we have consider bills, accounts and financial statements for September 2021. Again, something we discussed last week. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second. And just as a reminder, for all people watching, if you go to the district website and under finances, you can find our check register and all the reports of the, that we discussed in detail last week at our pre-agenda meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. There was a motion by Mr. Denle and a second by Dr. Kingman on this particular item. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, Dr. McFarland's coming forward. Consider proposed amendment for district official budget general fund.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, as I had presented last week to the group in our pre-agenda meeting, recommending to make an amendment to the revenue stream for the budget to show it more in line with, reflect what the state did with the accounting portion of the whole harmless portion that they, that the district in our budget adoption originally applied to the fiscal year 2021 and actually got applied by the state to 21-22. And so this is going to reflect that along with the difference in what the district is running right now as appropriate to enrollment and attendance rate. Is there any questions that I can answer or are there any questions I can answer?
Board, we asked a lot of questions last week. Any other questions for Dr. McFarland?
Not, not really. Mr. Parker, but just as explanation to the public, this is kind of a, a double whammy between attendances for the last couple of years in the state and its whole harmless effort is now pulling back part of our funds from the 2021 school year. And then as we see our attendance waning slightly this year, we have to make a second adjustment for 2021-2022. That's my best explanation. Mr. Dr. McFarland may clean that up a little, but.
That's correct. And it's also my recollection, if we didn't have to do this, but it helps us with our FIRSD first rating that we take care of it.
Yeah, it could show a higher variance with, it doesn't discount you or anything, but they take away some points if you had, the higher the variance is that you show in the revenue flow and the projection and then the actual at the end of the year. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion to approve?
Somebody. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Denle and a second by Dr. Kingman to approve. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? Call this for vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, Mr. Ketchum, you're up next to discuss purchase of some school buses.
Good evening, Mr. President. Dr. Detloff, board members, thank you for having me. So last week I mentioned to you that overall we have 91 school buses. 61 of those are regular ed, 30 of those are, are special ed. As a, as a way to just keep our fleet in, in good condition, we're, we're asking to buy three new full-size Class C 71 passenger buses. And all these buses would be gasoline, gasoline for a grand total of $335,280, which is part of our capital outlay budget. So, so just, do you, or do you have questions over, over this?
I don't necessarily have a question. I think it's important that we kind of fill everybody in on what we discussed last week at our pre-agenda board meeting. So as you discussed last week, we have a regular replacement schedule for buses. We're a little bit behind on that, but not much. And this allows us to make sure that our buses are, we can continue to maintain them and do the things that we need to do on our current buses and as we, as we retire buses, then we try to make sure that we're buying what the district needs and what we'll need long-term in the future. So that's what we talked about last week and certainly I appreciate you bringing this forward to our board team so we can, we can consider purchasing some additional buses. And that is, as you mentioned, part of our budget, part of our revenue budget and part of our expenditures that we plan to do in 2021-2022. That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Lehman. And also you mentioned and probably said it again, but our buses have a lifespan of 12 to 15 years and 250,000 miles and with 91 buses, you mentioned we need to replace three to eight buses every year for preventative maintenance, just to make sure that we stay within that so that this is a safety issue as well as a maintenance issue, that we don't want our students to be traveling around on buses that have more than 12 to 15 years and more than 250,000 miles if possible. So this is something that we're gonna be seeing you every year to, about this. So you need to, every year, I know you're sharpening your pencil, but, but if you need more buses, you need to let us know because we don't want to get too far behind if we are behind. All right?
Yes, sir.
Sure, any other board discussion on this issue? And I, I will make the, the motion on this one that we approve administration's recommendation to buy three school buses from Blue Star Bus Sales. All three buses are 71 passenger Type C buses with gasoline engines for a total amount of $335,280, which has been budgeted.
Second.
All right, I've made the motion and Mr. Gallegos has made a second. Is there any public comment on this issue? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. All right, Dr. Detloff, we have placed an item on the agenda under your name, consider request to name an SAISD facility. This was something you said you were still thinking about, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, we have a procedure in place. In fact, it's a local policy, CW Local, which I believe is included in our board packet and available online. But CW Local really provides some criteria on the naming or renaming of district facilities. We received some information and a request to name the library at Lakeview High School in honor of Laura Elms. As I mentioned in our pre-agenda, Laura Elms has been a terrific teacher for us for many years. She is in her 50th start in SAISD this school year and she has done a tremendous job of connecting and educating students over the years. These individuals are following the current procedures. In CW Local policy, I believe the second item on there states that the superintendent will conduct a review of the nomination. I wanted to let our board of trustees know that we are still reviewing this, this information, looking at background information. Also, if you look at a criteria on the second phase of the potential renaming of facilities, it also indicates that retired distinguished educators certainly are an option for the naming. One of the kind of internal protocols that we're looking for in our background history is that most of our educators in SAISD have been retired educators. So we are still in the, kind of the informal stage of this process to reviewing, reviewing it and looking at this nomination in accordance with our previous kind of historical data that we have in our past procedures. So we are continuing to examine this request. If the request moves forward, then we will continue to follow CW Local policy.
Right, so there's no recommendation at this time?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right. All right, then we'll move on to our next item, which is consider and take possible action to request sanctions on teacher certificates for abandonment of contract.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, I'm gonna start us off on this agenda item and then I'll let Dr. Gomez also provide additional details. This is a newer item that passed a legislative session a couple of years ago. Previously, the, this fell really under the jurisdiction of the superintendent hired and nominated and appointed by our board trustees. But there's been a change in that where if there's an issue on a contract, that it goes to the board of trustees. So this is a newer procedure, but we wanted to highlight the fact, I think that in SAISD, having a contract and really any contractual agreement across our state is a mutual benefit, not only to the system or institution in SAISD, but it's a mutual benefit to the employees. It's a protection and certainly a benefit that will help teaching and learning in the classroom and the hiring and recruitment of administrators as well. I know in SAISD, we wanna honor our commitment to students and we believe that when an educator, administrator, any, any employee of our district commits that is under a contract, we believe that they should obligate, be under obligation to that contract for, to meet the needs of our students in the classroom. And so we, we understand that this commitment is a serious commitment and we want to ensure that all, to really respect the integrity of a contractual obligation. So Dr. Gomez is gonna provide a little additional information on this. There is some information that she's going to share that is specific to the employee. So the topic is contract abandonment and there's certain reasons and rationale and causes for doing this, but we believe once you commit to SAISD, you are committing to the students in your classroom and we want to honor and uphold that commitment. And so we are faced with a situation with an employee or two employees where we need to take a hard look at their contractual situation. And there's a very detailed descriptor involved here and Dr. Gomez is gonna kind of take you through that. So this is a little bit of new territory for us.
Okay. So as Dr. Detloff said, we do have the two employees there and most certainly if there are medical issues or relocations that are outside of the employee's control that prevent them from continuing with the district, those would be examples of good cause. With both employees, we are bringing these forward because it is our obligation to make sure our students have qualified educators to serve them. And we always want to work with an employee in their individual situations. However, when employees do not have good cause, it creates a hardship for our students and our families that we have to serve as the employer. We have worked directly with our attorney as well and have been advised with what we have moved forward with all of you. So with the first employee, Nixie Rose Cobbler, there was no documentation of any medical reasoning for the employee to not return. The employee only worked a very short amount of time and in fact used more leave than she did in fact work. She was not responsive to our multiple attempts to help assist her and no longer returned and just cleaned out her classroom and did not return. So that's the first employee before I move on. You will see the fact that we will be coming forward depending on what you as a board determine and we will make a recommendation at a later date that that employee's term contract or her probationary contract be terminated at the end of the school year. We will need to make a motion though, one at a time. So are we, do you have any questions about the first employee before we move on?
Any questions on this employee? All right, you can move forward.
Okay. On the second employee, Megan Henderson had been employed with us for a number of years. She did have a change in grade levels. So we met with her, offered her a different campus and different assignment where she had experience. And she did not respond to that. She did present, present us some documentation from her doctor. That documentation did not support the fact that she could not return to work for a substantial amount of time other than a few hours on occasion, not for a number of days or a substantial amount of time. She denied our reassignment and has not returned to work. So the documentation that she did provide us does not support the fact that she is unable to perform her job responsibilities.
If I'm reading this right, she previously taught first grade and we moved her to fifth grade. That was not working out. Then we agreed to move her to a first grade class on a different campus.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And she did not accept that either.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions of Dr. Gomez on this particular teacher?
The same, Mr. Parker, before we move on from Ms. Henderson, we will come forward later with a recommendation to non-renew her term contract at the end of the school year.
All right. And right now, when we ask for motions, we need to do one at a time.
Yes.
For each teacher, so we'll, let's first move with.
Max, sorry, quick question. These teachers have been notified that they were being presented this evening?
Yes.
If I'm understanding, just, just big picture wise, when someone is under contract for us to let them go, we have to show good cause to let them go. And all we're asking in return is if they want to leave on their own, they need to show good cause while they leave on their own during the terms of a contract. That's what you were saying. There is a, there's a reason that contracts are, are a win-win for both sides. If both, both sides need to recognize that a contract is important. We are, we, I think the public needs to understand that we routinely let our teachers out of an, out of a contract if they have medical issues or relocations that are outside the employee's control or other reasons. If we think they're good cause, they work with us, they try to help us find another teacher to take their place and so forth. And that's why you say it's a little bit of new ground for us because we don't do this very often when we're taking this. Now, we also need the public to understand that we have a teacher shortage right now. We even have openings now where it's difficult to find teachers. It's gonna be very difficult to find replacements for these teachers that are, have abandoned their contract and basically are not there to teach the classes that they were assigned. That's why we're trying to take this seriously because we don't want other teachers to think that, that they can do the same thing and there won't be any repercussions. Have I stated that correctly?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, with that said, is there any other discussion? And if not, I'll entertain a motion for the first teacher, which is Ms. Cobbler.
I'll make a motion to determine the good, determine that good cause did not exist for Nixie Rose Cobbler to abandon her employment contract and to authorize the superintendent to submit a written request to the TEA to sanction the teacher's certificate for abandonment of contract.
And I'll second that motion. So we have a motion by Mr. Gallegos and a second by myself to, to vote to determine that good cause did not exist for Ms. Cobbler to abandon her employment contract and to authorize the superintendent to submit a written request to the Texas Education Agency to sanction the teacher's certificate for abandonment of contract. Is there any other board discussion on Ms. Cobbler? Is there any public comment on this particular teacher? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes. We will now discuss the contract of Ms. Henderson. Is there a motion on this particular teacher?
Mr. Parker, I make a motion to determine that good cause did not exist for Megan Henderson to abandon her employment contract and authorize the superintendent to submit a written request to the Texas Education Agency to sanction the teacher's certificate for abandonment of contract.
Second that. All right, there's been a motion by Mr. Lehman, a second by Mr. Denle. All right, there's been a motion by Mr. Lehman, a second by Mr. Denle in regard to Ms. Henderson. Is there any other board discussion on Ms. Henderson? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes on this item. All right, is there any reason we need to go into executive session? Dr. Detloff shaking his head. Any teachers, I mean, any board members have any reason to go into executive session? If not, then our announcements are, we have a finance pre-agenda workshop on November 8, 2021, and our regular board meeting will be on November 15, 2021. And with that, if nothing else, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for all the coming.